Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the 30th meeting of the mayor and city council to order on Monday, April 26, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Ms. Ral, please call the roll.
Mr. DeWalt. Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Laz?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
President Nicholas?
Here.
Mayor Mau?
Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes of the work session on April 7, 2021. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Clerk, I make a motion to approve the work session minutes from April 7.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Our next agenda item is the report of the mayor and city council. Tonight, I'll start with Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. Since our last meeting, we had two, two more food deliveries at Laurel Elementary School. And I believe that this Wednesday will be our last one. I haven't got any notification that they're going to extend it through May. I just like to, I contacted Melinda, who's the principal. And I believe that we started these around Thanksgiving of last year. So the statistics, and I could be off, but there were 24 food deliveries from Thanksgiving until coming this Wednesday, which totals 14,112 boxes of food. And if, if you multiply those boxes of food by 30.5 pounds, it totals out to be 430,000 pounds, 416. It's a, it's quite amazing when you add up the numbers. But I think the most important thing about this whole endeavor by, it was started by Principal Melinda at Laurel Elementary School and the school teachers is that not only did it involve them who originated it there, it also involved Laurel Elementary School staff. There were Laurel police officers that contributed heavily into it. Also, our city employees from every department came out for it. City officials, Mayor Mo was there, city council was there. And we also had several citizens and volunteers that actually came on their own and helped us out. And I think that's the biggest thing when you, you are in pandemic that we, we are and people need to eat and they need food. You get all these varieties coming, of people coming together and supporting our Laurel community. And I think that's a heck of an accomplishment. The other thing I attended on Saturday, it was a expungement fair at First Baptist Church. I'll tell you, those people at the First Baptist Church, when they sponsor something, they don't leave any stone unturned. They are just, they're fabulous in what they do and getting everybody organized, getting the cars all parked. And this, this health fair is sponsored by Ayesha Braveboy, who's the state's attorney for Prince George's County. And it was very, very educational in what they do. And it was all made, made possible by our own Brensas Smith, someone Brensas Smith, who, 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 who was a city representative supporting this fair. And it was amazing, they, just the educational value of this. And if you have anybody that wants to get any sort of expungement off their record, I mean, passing out a brochure and doing those things is one thing. But look up Ayesha Braveboy, the state's attorney for Prince George's County. I think she's done three or four of these is what Brensas told me. And once you show up there, all you need is about an hour or two of your time. You show up there, they call your number, you go inside, you meet with the representative, and they do all the work for you. And how can you beat that when if you would hire an attorney, I guarantee you, it would be well into the thousands of dollars that he would charge you for that. And that's why the, the program is so, I thought so wonderful is because it doesn't cost our citizens nothing. It's free. And Brensas and Baptist Church, they had food there and everything for them. And I think it's just a wonderful, wonderful program and that we offer to, to our citizens around Laurel. That's all I have for now, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I had the opportunity to help out with the food share with Councilman DeWalt and mayor and city staff and the, with the Laurel Elementary School. Past couple of weeks, this past Saturday, as Councilman DeWalt mentioned, I hosted a expungement fair in partnership with the state's attorney's office. She's had a campaign going around the, around the county. So I took it upon myself to see and bring that here to Laurel. And we served over 60 people. And I'm, I'm a firm believer in no man should be held back, man or woman. I'm sorry. No man or woman should be held back by their past. And that's one way to help clean up your past of a mistake you maybe have made along the way. I want to thank Mayor Mo, Councilman DeWalt, State's Attorney, First Baptist Church in Laurel, many of our partners. We had a couple organizations there, Employee Prince Georges. We had the deltas there registering people to vote. It was a wonderful experience and I'm looking forward to doing more in the community. That's all, that's Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Sidnor?
Thank you, Madam President. On August 20, excuse me, August, way ahead of myself, must have August on my mind. On April 21st, in reference to Earth Day, Navy Federal Credit Union contacted the city and wanted to do something from Earth Day. And so I, we cleaned up Cypress Street Park. So they want to get back to the community as a local business inside the city. So I thought that was very popular for them to do that. They had four employees come out along with their branch manager, Michelle Nolan. It was windy, but we got it done. Then on August 24th, Laurel Crowe, Crowe Condomentor Association, excuse me, Homeowner Association, invited me out to help plant flowers and trees in their community. That was a really honor. We want to be totally honest with you, I've never been invited to do something like that since I've been a council member. And for a community to reach out to me, I thought that was very important. So I want to thank President Monica Gomez and Vice President Todd Leibert, for sending invitation for me to come out there to meet their residents and just help them beautify that in the community for Earth Day. And that's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Liz?
No report this week, Madam President.
Okay. Mayor Mo?
Thank you, Madam President. Several things, let me first give condolences to Michelle Blair, who is the environmental programs manager. We learned today that her husband passed away. And Mark is her husband and was active in the community as well. Want to provide condolences to her and, and to her family. Let me also address the tailpipe issue that a lot of people are experiencing. I think you see it on social media, it's loud noises coming from tailpipes, drag racing in some cases, speeding around in different areas. We're, we're going to work to find a solution to that, to that issue. It may take some time. A lot of these cars are being told are being manufactured that way in some cases. So that's going to cause some issues. I've talked to county officials who are also looking at trying to address this, as well as others around us. It is an issue not just related to Laurel. I do see some of the social media posts. What I do want to tell people is instead of going directly to social media posting something, please, if it's in the city of Laurel, we'd like for you to call the police department and notify them. The individual vehicles may be gone by that time, but it creates a pattern for them to be able to look at. It creates, you know, a record. But there, there is no easy solution to this. We're going to have to work with our county and our state officials to try to address this. But we've heard your concerns and, and we are going to try to address them, as well as I said, those vehicles that are, you know, just in certain places around town where they have several vehicles causing problems and issues. We're going to look to work with our business community, the police department, and the community to help resolve some of these problems. Today, I had the opportunity, I had a little issue, so I had to go visit Dr. Kunic. For those, he's been around for 38 years or longer in the city of Laurel. I learned today that he is retiring on the 30th of this Friday after 38 years of service to the community. And I want to congratulate him and thank him. I know many of us might be on this line that have scars from some of the things that he had to take care of for us. But all the best to him and we wish him and his family, as I said, the very best. We did send out a press release today regarding the Green Shovel Award Program. We are going to move forward with the program. You can go to the city's website and you can submit names. You can call my office Monday through Friday and submit names as well and addresses and allow, as well as give us a little information about the area that you're nominating. We'll start the award program and we'll do it in a safe manner and we'll do it in the proper way that CDC and other regulations allow us to do. And that'll be, that will start this in April and it will end in September. We're also working on some green initiative awards. They're in draft. We are asking for input from groups and individuals. So as well as our own environmental affairs committee in the city. So they're in draft and we hope to have them out next week, I'm sorry, next month, where we can start those programs as well. We are going to celebrate Arbor Day with a tree planting. That'll be done virtually. It'll be Friday, this Friday, April the 30th at 10:00 AM. We'll be planting a red bud, Rising Sun Tree in the memorial gardens out in front of City Hall. And it will be dedicated in memory of those lives lost during the COVID-19 pandemic. Just a couple of other things, Madam President. The food distribution with Laurel Elementary, the Royal House Church, St. Mary's of the Mills, the ICCL, all of those individuals, Knights of Columbus. I just again want to thank them for their continued work. And I think you heard Councilman DeWalt talk about how the community has really come together to make that happen, as well as our own employees and police department members and many in the community. So I can't say enough about that. We hope, the mayor and city council hope to be able to get all of those individuals after this pandemic is over and acknowledge, somehow acknowledge all the work that many had done in the community on food distribution. We're not done yet. We still have a ways to go. Chrissy Cornwell, our emergency manager, is following and keeping track of all the locations of food distribution. And I want to thank her for that as well. So again, keep up the great work. Thank you all very much in the community for what you're doing. And we still need your help. So please look for other places that is providing food distribution. We did have, I'm sorry, I did attend the COG, the Council of Governments Board of Directors meeting, as well as the Prince George's County Municipal Association Board of Directors. Last week, we did have the state of Maryland COVID-19 update call for municipal leaders. And I want to acknowledge and thank the Laurel Police Department for their Riverfront Park Walk. I think both that Friday evening and that Saturday were attended by residents of the community. I think a lot of good information was handed out and provided to those, those individuals. So thank you all very much. As well as our own Department of Public Works on their East Cycle and Paper shredding event. They were there early in the morning, eight until noon. And I forget what, how many pounds there were, but the people of Laurel came out and disposed of their e-recycling and their shredding in the proper manner. We want to again acknowledge and thank Public Works for that. We had the opportunity to, we were invited to the Mayfair Homeowners Association Annual Meeting, they're virtual. They were asking about annexation and what it requires and the types of services we have. So we provided them all that information, told them if they had any questions, please let us know as well. And on April the 22nd, I did present a citation to Mission Barbecue for their support of Reeves Across America Day. They provided funding for the reefs that we'll be placing out later this year. So I, that's a pleasure of doing that as well. We did have a meeting with Congressman Brown, Councilman Liz and myself regarding the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. That is something that we did a resolution almost two years ago on. That coalition is still working to make sure trucks don't get big, get big, get bigger, longer and heavier. And we had the opportunity with Councilman, I'm sorry, County Congressman Anthony Brown. And I do want to acknowledge the expungement fair at the First Baptist Church. First Baptist Church has, has been a, a great partner, as well as many other organization and churches. When we talk about partnering with the city on a lot of things, but in particular, you know, they've been out in front. And Councilman Smith, want to congratulate you on a, a wonderful event. And one that I think, I think you told me there were about 70, 70 individuals that you were able to help. Again, I appreciate that and I'm sure the community does as well. Madam President, I do have some proclamations, but I'm sorry, I don't have them with me. I'm not at the location, so I'm going to read them into the record. We'll make sure they get on social media. Is proclamation seven dash 21 Municipal Clerks Week, which is May the 2nd through May the 8th. The proclamation number nine dash 21, National Police Week, which is May the 9th through May the 15th. Proclamation number 1021, National Economic Development Week, which is May the 9th through May the 15th. And proclamation number 11 dash 21, Mental Health Awareness Month. I do have some reappointments, Madam President, and appointments. And if you have your memo, I'd ask if you could read those into the record and ask for your confirmation on those.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Minority, mayoral appointment of Abasola Akuo, Education Advisory Committee, Rhonda Whitley to the Board of Election Supervisors, a reappointment of John Keesh, Kish, Board of Election Supervisors, Kenneth Dams, Ethics Commission, Tommy Sags, Ethics Commission, and Borati Duruva, Arts Council. Hopefully I didn't mess up their names. I'd like to entertain a motion for these reappointments and appointments.
Madam Clerk, I make a motion to approve the names written in the record for appointment and reappointment to the following commissioners you read in the record.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report. Thank you, members of the council, for your confirmation as well.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is motion to ratify executive orders number 2021-01, 2021-02, 2021-03, 2021-04, 2021-05, 2021-06, and 2021-07. Issued by Mayor Mo. Any, I'm sorry. Mayor Mo, do you have any, anything to add?
Only that I kind of, we kind of got behind on getting those to the council, but we're still conform to the requirements. And these mainly are with the pandemic, the changes and the revisions to the, to the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Clerk, I make a motion to modify the executive orders you read in the record, in the order.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes. Our next agenda item is the general public hearing. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city of Laurel will be holding virtual meetings. The public is asked to submit written testimony on agenda items to the Laurel City Clerk, which is Kim Rao. Her address is K R A U at laurel.md.us by 2:00 PM on the meeting days and to register for the Zoom meeting information. I opened the public hearing at 6:21. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, we don't have any members of the public signed up to speak.
I closed the public hearing at 6:21 PM. Our next agenda item is public hearing on the intention to raise the tax rate above the constant yield tax rate, CYTR. Michelle Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. In accordance with the state of Maryland Annotated Code Tax Property Articles, Section 2-205 and 6-308, the city of Laurel, while we are not proposing to increase our tax rate above 71 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, we are not reducing it to the amount of the constant yield, which is 68 cents per hundred. We have placed the required advertisement in the April 15th edition of the Prince George's Post, which is a newspaper of general circulation. The ad was pre-approved by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. So we have met all the requirements for this law.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, nobody is, excuse me, signed up to speak on this constant yield tax rate.
Thank you. I opened the public hearing at 6:23 PM. And since no one has signed up to speak, I closed the public hearing at 6:23 PM. Our next agenda item is second public hearing with possible action on resolution number 4-21, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the purpose of the city of Laurel program for public information aimed at community rating systems. I've read the title and to the record for the second reading. Chrissy Cornwell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to the mayor and other city council members. Before you is resolution 421, which was developed to evaluate and expand on educational projects through the program for public information, which is known as the PPI under the community rating system. The PPI plan provides guidance on developing specific messages to motivate residents and businesses to take action to protect themselves and their property before, during, and after potential flooding. The PPI committee will use this plan to review existing and create new projects or materials. The committee will meet quarterly to discuss and review projects and update the plan as needed. The PPI committee and plan will not only add value to our community rating system effort, but will provide residents and businesses with the knowledge and resources for mitigation and response activities. I thank you for your time and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, there's nobody signed up to speak.
I'll open the public hearing at 6:25 PM and I'll close the public hearing at 6:25 PM.
Madam President, could I ask Ms. Cornwell a question, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Cornwell, one of my constituents down in Spring House Apartments got a, a letter from you concerning the evacuation down at the Tux and Greens in reference to flooding. And she asked you a question, but you said the, the information was not available at this time due to, I, I, I can't recall what it exactly it said, but hers, her concern is that, are you, are you aware that there is only one way out of that whole Patuxen Greens area in the event that the creek down by 197 by Stewart Manor and the 711 there? If that floods, that will make it only one way out, and that's Clubhouse Boulevard. Are you aware of that?
No, sir, I'm not. And the only letter I'm aware of sending out was the people that were in the special flooding hazard area. So I, I don't recall anyone emailing or giving me any type of correspondence that said anything about that. I, I would like to follow up with you and see who that is and then get that address to make sure she has answers to her questions.
Okay. My other question is, have you ever been, oh, I know you're new here and everything like that, fairly new here. Have you ever been over to that area and, and had a tour of the area or anything like that as far as in ingress and egress in and out of that place?
No, sir.
Okay. I would strongly advise you, when you start dealing with the people over there, there is only one way into that property. And there's only one and a half ways out of there. And if, like I said, if it floods down by the 197 by the Stewart Manor in that area, now we're talking about one exit out of there. There's been numerous talks through the Planning Commission and everything. Actually, the president of Planning Commission wanted them to build another road, which you can't because the rest of the surrounding area, it's going to flood anyway, or it is flooded. It's, it's a swamp. But the whole thing is with that area, and it's very, it's very sensitive. And they even brought up, a couple of the members of the Planning Commission brought up about, in the event there's an emergency down there, emergency situation, and one of those roads get blocked off in there, you're going to have a mess down in there, people trying to get out during an evacuation event. And this new complex that they're building down there, they're estimated it, along with Spring House and the rest of them and the single family homes and everything else that's coming out of that one exit or one and a half exits, they're looking at 1,300 more cars coming out of there. Once that development is completed, that's 1,300 more cars on top of everything else that's over there. It's going to be, and I, I, I have no idea what your background is and things like that. But the only thing the developer has put on the table is he's going to put a turn lane, a turn lane on 197 at Clubhouse Boulevard, so you can make a left turn because the traffic is horrible there. They speed up there and there's been a lot of serious accidents at Clubhouse Boulevard and 197. But that's the only thing, he's making no recommendation. He's making no improvements to get out of there in an emergency. And if there is an emergency over there, it will be frightful to everybody that lives over there. And that seems to be her biggest concern. But I will forward that information from her to you so that you're well aware of what her concerns are. And basically, they're my concerns too. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, did you? Thank you. Mr. Allen, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, ma'am, I did. I just wanted to add Councilman DeWalt. I've been working closely with Chrissy, and I continue to work closely with her with all the issues down at Patuxent Greens. And also, just to remind you that one of the things, first off, they're raising all the, all the land up to be out of the special flood hazard area, and also, they're going to create and install a certified levy that we're working on too, which will provide extra protection for that area. In addition to that, we are in the process of obtaining the low-cost alert gauges that are the state-of-the-art gauges that'll be upwards between six and twelve we'll have in the city, which will provide a added alert, constant alert and constant monitoring of the water conditions. So if, in fact, we, we see a rise in the water for whatever reason, we will be able to act more quickly than we can right now. Also, remember that these low-cost gauges will be able, anybody who wants any of the citizens who want to can tap into these gauges and monitor the levels also. So we're moving along with that program. We just had a meeting the other day with the program contractors and the specialists and, and Mr. Frost on the I T end of it. So once we get this system up and running, once they get the levy built, we'll have a lot of things in place to help protect the people down at Patuxent Greens. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this resolution is more of an educational resolution, more for the committee being conducted and things to do in case you prepare you for flood and things of nature, right? That's what this resolution is about, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. I make a motion to approve resolution four twenty-one.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Mayor Ma.
I concur. And I just do want to acknowledge and thank the partners that have worked with us and continue to represent part of this program, and that's members of the Laurel Board of Trade, the Laurel for the Batuxent, Inc., the Laurel College Center, the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department, as well as Chrissy's office and Steve's office as well. So can't do this without those partnerships. I really do want to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number nineteen seventy-two, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, authorizing and providing for the issue issuance of the city's general obligation term note, series twenty twenty-one, in the principal amount not to exceed one million five hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight to refinance the city's general obligation term notes, series twenty sixteen A and series twenty sixteen B, providing that such notes shall be issued upon the full faith and credit of the city, providing for the levy of annual taxes upon all accessible property within the city to pay the debt serviced on such notes, providing for the form, interest rate, maturity date, and other provisions of such notes, and for related purposes, and providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Michelle Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is a consolidation of two previous loans that we had executed. One was for the purchase and renovations of eight eleven Fifth Street and the other for seventy-seven oh three seventy-seven oh five Sandy Spring Road for the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility, along with another note for which we did some street projects and purchase of some heavy-duty equipment. So these will all be consolidated into one loan for another five-year term. And while it does allow you to assess a separate tax, we do not need to do that. This debt service is already included in the proposed F Y twenty twenty-two operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, nobody's signed up to speak.
I'll open the public hearing at six thirty-five P M, and since no one has signed up to speak, I will close the public hearing at six thirty-five P M. I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval, Madam President.
I second Madam President.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Mayor Ma.
I just want to thank Michelle, Michelle and her team for the work they do. It's not easy. I also think that this gives us an opportunity to look down the road, that if we want to incur some debt to possibly do some more infrastructure, which we all know is badly needed, they give us that opportunity. So again, to Michelle, to you and your team, thanks very much. We appreciate it. I concur.
Thank you. Our second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number nineteen seventy-one, an ordinance adopting the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and to levy property taxes and to authorize the collection of such taxes. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Ms. Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. Again, this is a balanced general operating budget of thirty-six million, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars with the reauthorization of capital improvement program funds of twelve million, two hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred nineteen dollars, as well as new project funding of four million, two hundred twenty-six thousand, fifty-six dollars. The tax rates are seventy-one cents per hundred dollars of assessed value for real property with an additional three cent assessment for commercial areas and a dollar sixty-nine for business personal property tax rate. And that is the budget that's been presented to you. And if I could, I would just like to thank the mayor for his support and the city administrator's office, Ms. Crook and Ms. Polley, as well as all the department heads and their, their department budget staff, and especially the members of the Department of Budget and Personnel Services in my office, in particular, Mrs. Woods, for all of her assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, no, nobody has signed up to speak.
I opened the public hearing at six thirty-eight P M, and since no one has signed up to speak, I closed the public hearing at six thirty-eight P M. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move for the approval.
Can I get a second?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Laz?
Yeah, before I vote, I just want to note that I've, I've read with great interest the problems that municipalities, especially small cities, have had around the United States in balancing their budget this pandemic year. So I think that, you know, although we thank the staff, I think it's, it's, it's incumbent upon us every chance we get to thank the city staff and the mayor's office for, you know, scrubbing the numbers and presenting a balanced budget that will continue to provide the services our citizens expect. And with that, I vote yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes, before I vote, yes, I'd like to say something as well. I always had these great ideas, and I can't be elected official with things I wanted to do, but I realize that a lot of things cost some additional funding. And so I understand the things I want to do wasn't pretty much possible, but the city budget come first with employees getting paid and the service equipment. Employees need to fund the city. But I was still, you know, not going to get it this term though, but hopefully, if anything happened in the next couple of years or so, that we can now get this after-school program together. I think that's very important, pushing reading and writing, especially for the kids with deficient in reading and writing, because if we don't take care of these kids at a very young age, we're going to see problems with them later that can prevent expulsion programs and things of that nature. So I vote yes.
President Nicholas?
Yes.
Mayor Ma.
I'm going to make a, sorry about that. I'm going to make just a couple of statements because I think it's important for the public to know and understand, but this still wasn't an easy budget. You know, there are a lot of things that are not in this budget. There are things such as conventions and conferences, all of those different things for, that educate not only our employees, but the elected officials and others. We did keep money in for training. In particular, the proposed budget also keeps the services at the current level they're at now. It still provides for a two and a half percent market adjustment for our city employees, and it also met the obligations of our collective bargaining agreement with the F O P. And I think it's important as well, you know, your Councilman Sidnor say that he, there are things that he wanted to do. I think things that we're doing now sets the tone for years to come, and I think that's important. We are, we are doing things such as in this budget, there is funds included in case during this pandemic, we still have to do a vote by ballot for the elections. Hopefully, it'll be a hybrid of some type. There is funding in there. There is funding in there for one of the best things I think we've done in a long time, and you all are part of that as members of this council, and the city staff have been important as well. And that's on multi-service centers. We continue to move forward with that. We think we were able to secure funding in Annapolis through a grant through our delegation, and we're waiting for something in writing in that. We also are being told that we're going to get some money through the federal government that was, that'll be direct funding to, to the city as well. All of that will require a lot of making sure that we know where the funds are going, documentation and other things. But that also may keep us out of the woods. As you all know, I've always said that after an emergency or, in this case, pandemic, it's usually twelve to eighteen months when the council really starts to see, any city really starts to see the effects of that. We're seeing some of that now with our business community storefronts closing. So we need to get back on our economic development and continue to reach out to businesses. We're doing that. You all have left funding in there for them to, to work on economic development, which again, will only increase and take care of us down the road as we move forward. We're not out of the woods yet. We still have a lot to do with the pandemic and make sure people get vaccines in their arms. The after-school program, again, I think those are things that we can continue to work towards. And we have an after-school program already, but I do think it's something that we should sit down and talk to with Ms. Farr and her group, Councilman Sidnor and others. But again, I think the things that you all are doing here and the way the budget is formulated to this year only sets the tone for years to come. So I appreciate all the input from the council and all their support. Again, to Christian, where's Christian? Christian Polley, I want to thank Christian, you know, she's, our acting deputy city administrator. This is her first time actually working with the Department of Budget Management and, and all the departments to make sure that the budget came off properly, on time, and most importantly, it became, it came balanced. And so I want to thank you, Christian, and Lou Ann as well, and all the staff in the Department of Budget Management, Personnel Services, excuse me. And again, to all the departments, thank you for pulling together and making sure that we're funding the right things. And not, I know not everything could be funded, but as we move forward and other funds become available, that's where I think we'll, we'll continue to meet your needs. As well as the pension has also the requirement that the actuaries want it. We've again, met that again this year, and I think that's something to be proud of. We either met that every year and added more to it, which only pays dividends. So I think what you're doing is setting the tone, and it's setting it in the right direction for the city. So thank you all very much, and I'll concur with that.
Before I adjourn, I'd like to just add my comments as well. We have a great team of leaders here, you know. I know that there's a lot of preparation, and there's a lot of time that goes into the budget. So I just want to say thank you for what you do for the city, not just because of the budget, just for, for all you do and your commitment. I know the pandemic has been very difficult for everybody, and somebody knows somebody or related to somebody who's lost a loved one. So I know it has not been easy. I acknowledge that, and I just want to sincerely say thank you. If there's no other issues to come before the council.
Madam President? Man, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I, I left out the I T department when I was saying thank you for the expulsion fair that they helped with, especially Mark Freeman. I couldn't leave him out, get off this meeting and not say anything. Him and especially Kenya, they came out and they helped facilitate that and made sure everything was running smoothly. Not, there was no hiccup as far as I T and the attorneys needing their documents. I want to say thank you for coming out and spending that amount of time with me. It was about four hours, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, if there's no other business to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.